Sure. And was there a space in that area for your party?
No, there was not a designated area for us and we inquired.
So where did you end up waiting?
We were just waiting in the area together with the observers.
Sure. And how did you know that these people you were waiting with were observers?
They had on their identification badges.
Can you now recall which observers were there?
They were the European Union and then they were, um, they were local observers.
As general secretary of the party, did you know the chief election officer?
Yes.
And what can you tell us what his name is or was?
Mr. Keith Lowenfield.
And did you see Mr. Lowenfield at Ashman's Building that evening?
Yes.
Did he assist you in getting a space?
Yes, he did.
Before you had spoken to Mr. Lowenfield, had you approached any other GCOM official so that your party could participate in the verification process?
Yes, we did. And they told us to sit in the area in front.
Who did you approach?
One of the clerks and then he referred us to Mr. Mingo.
So you spoke to Mr. Mingo?
Yes.
And you apprised him of the difficulty your party had?
Correct.
And what was his response?
His response was like you would have to use that designated area.
Sure. At about, well, I would have to say at about 2:00 AM the following morning, did anything occur?
The tabulation was brought to halt.
By whom?
By Mr. Mingo.
I take it you were still there in the building?
Yes, I was.
And before 2:00 AM had, sorry.
You say, Mr. Aaron, that the tabulation was brought to a halt by Mr. Mingo.
Yes, sir.
Did he say something?
Yes.
What did he say?
He said that we will stop the tabulation at this time and we will resume the next day.
Prior to 2:00 AM, what had been happening in the tabulation room?
Prior to 2:00 AM, the tabulation was being done and we were having some challenges seeing the screen that it was be done, that it was being presented on.
You mean, when you say "we," you refer to your party?
Myself and other political parties.
Okay. No, well, don't tell us about other political parties, all right? Speak about your personal experience.
Yes.
What you did, heard, saw.
Okay.
Okay? So before that time, the verification process had been going on, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But you had had some difficulties seeing the screen that was being used?
Yes, and...
Now, tell me something. The verification process, did it include comparison of the statements of polls which parties had with what GCOM was calling out?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you said you had some difficulties seeing the screen. Did you bring this to the attention of any GCOM employee?
Yes, I brought it to the attention of Mr. Mingo.
What did you say to him?
I said that the screens were too small. We were not seeing the tabulations correctly.
And what did, sorry, I think the chairman has a question.
Mr. Aaron, the complaint about the screen. You complaining about the size of the screen?
The size, in terms of the fonts.
The fonts, okay. And what did he see in response to you?
He said that is what we were provided with and that is what we had to use.
Thank you.
Now, you told us that Mr. Mingo said that the verification exercise was going to stop at about 2:00 AM or words to that effect.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, what was your response to that?
We were concerned because the expediency in which the results would have been had would have been significantly delayed.
Sure. So tell me about "I," not "we," unless you identify who the other persons are.
Okay, myself and my other party representatives.
Okay. You all were concerned. Did you express your concern to anyone?
We expressed it and we expressed it profusely, stating that we were surprised that GCOM had not acquired enough human resource capabilities based on the amount of money that was given to fund the elections.
Who did you express?
We, I expressed that directly. I expressed that to Mr. Mingo.
What did Mr. Mingo say, if anything?
He said that his staff were tired and we would have to return the following day.
Did you ask him if he had backup staff?
We did.
What was his reply?
No, they don't. And we would have to return the next day. The staff had to rest.
Now, how many members of staff did he have in the room at that time?
I can't remember exactly, but there were, uh, staff posted at every, um, every portfolio, so to speak, in terms of those who were calling out and those who were tabulating.
Okay. At that point, did you or your party attempt to contact the CEO?
Yes, we did.
By what means?
We were asking the staff there if we can see the CEO and we actually protested too.
You asked the GCOM staff there?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
When you say the GCOM staff, does that include Mr. Mingo?
It includes Mr. Mingo.
When you asked Mr. Mingo to see the CEO, what did you say to Mr. Mingo?
We were uncomfortable with the time that...
What did you say?
We said that we were uncomfortable with the timing and the stop, the stopping of the count. And we wanted to continue. And if he could not make a decision, we want someone in authority that could have made a decision.
And did you specifically ask to see the CEO then?
Yes, ma'am.
And what did the returning officer say to, to that request? The reply to that request?
He was not available.
He told you that the CEO...
He told me the CEO, Mr. Keith Lowenfield, was not available.
So, having had the process stopped, did you then leave Ashman's Building?
Yes, we left Ashman's Building, myself and my party supporters.
And did you return on the following day?
Yes, returned later that day because it was already the third.
Oh, yes, it was already 2:00 in the morning, yes. So you returned later that day. Can you recall what time?
8 o'clock.
And can you tell us what, if anything, was happening? Was the verification process going?
No, it was been, we were just waiting around for it to get started.
And when you say "we," to whom do you refer?
Members of the United Republican Party and other political parties that were there.
And apart from party representatives, did you see any other persons there?
There were observers there.
How did you know they were observers?
They were identified and they had observers written at the back of their jackets.
When you say they were identified, what do you mean, by badges?
No, they had the observer actually written on their jackets.
Did you know any of them?
Yes, I, um, I know some from the European Union because we had met with them prior to the elections.
During the course of that morning, did you see the returning officer, Mr. Mingo?
Yes, I saw him.
Where?
He was in the Ashman's Building, in the area where the tabulation was being done.
And was Mr. Mingo doing anything or did he do anything?
No, not that morning. We were just trying to get the count started.
And when you say "we were just trying to get the count started," who is the "we"?
Myself and members of my political party, along with other political parties that were there.
And how were you doing this? What were you doing or saying to try to get the count started?
We were asking them, when, when are we going to resume the count? Because time is going and time is of the essence.
And you were asking whom?
Mr. Mingo in particular.
And what did he say?
They will resume very shortly. They're waiting on their staff to take up their positions.
Did he give you a timeframe at all?
No, he did not.
Now, I want to take you to... Um, just one second, please. Now, during the course of that day, could you tell us, um, whether any verification took place?
Yes, verification commenced.
At about what time?
Could have been closer to 11 o'clock.
And tell us exactly what happened.
The verification process begun and we then asked for, uh, tables because we were uncomfortable. We were just sitting on chairs. So we wanted, um, tables so we can, you know, put our SOPs on so that we can, um, mark them off correctly.
Okay. So you asked GCOM staff for tables so that you could do your work, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And were you provided with those?
We were provided with those tables after some protests and represented, representation from, um, the PPP party, um, in particular, Mr. Barrett, that deal.
And after you all received tables, did the verification process commence?
It did.
And tell me, what did it entail?
It entailed the results being called out by the GCOM representative and posted and we verifying it with the statement of polls that we had.
Now, as far as you can tell, what was the GCOM employee calling from at that point?
Statement of polls.
And when you say "posted," posted where?
It was posted on, they were calling and it was posted on the screens that they were, that were given, that were displayed.
Were these the same screens from the day, from before?
Yes, they were same small screens.
And were you able to now see the numbers?
No, we weren't. We protested again.
Did you protest?
Yes, I did.
To whom?
Mr. Mingo and then to Mr. Lowenfield.
Now, when you say you protested to Mr. Mingo, what did you say to him?
We said that the screens were too small. We were still not being able to verify the numbers clearly and we would like them to be much larger.
And did Mr. Mingo, um, reply to you?
He said that is what we would have had to work with and we asked to see the chief election officer.
And on this occasion, did you get to see the chief elections officer?
Yes, we did. I did.
And did you speak to the chief elections officer?
Yes, we expressed our concern.
Did, what did you say to him?
We said that the screens were too small and we were not seeing the numbers clearly.
And what did Mr. Lowenfield say?
They will fix it.
Did GCOM fix it?
GCOM did fix it.
GCOM, sorry?
Yes, Mr. Lowenfield fixed, fixed it and he, he gave us larger screens.
And what about the font?
The fonts were also enlarged. Yes.
So the, the verification, when the verification continued after it was fixed, were you able to see the numbers on the screen?
Yes, we were able to see the numbers on the screen.
Good. So for how long did the verification process continue?
I can't recall exactly how long, but I know that it was once again abruptly stopped.
When was this?
This was later into the evening. After we had decided, uh, after we had requested larger screen and every, screens and everyone were comfortable and the tabulation started, it was stopped, not more than two hours after.
Stopped by whom?
By the chief, um, chief election officer.
Where was he when it was stopped?
He was in, he was in the tabulation room.
And what did he say to cause it to stop?
He announced that we are going to stop and we will return the following day. Again, the staff had to rest.
I didn't catch the last part of what you...
The staff needed to rest.
The staff needed to rest. Now, before he came and said that, did you hear any complaint from any GCOM staff in the tabulation room?
No, I did not.
When Mr. Lowenfield said that you were going to stop and the staff needed to rest, did you and your party say anything to him?
Yes. We said to him that we found it strange that they were going to stop the tabulation. When we were now comfortable, everyone seemed to be in order and the tabulation was moving smoothly. We were shocked.
And what was his response?
His staff needed to rest.
I see. So the process stopped. Did GCOM staff remain in that room?
GCOM staff remained in the room and so did I.
And did Mr. Lowenfield say when you all were going to resume?
The following day.
Did you stay there or did you leave the building?
We left the building.
And did you return the following day?
We returned the following day.
At about what time?
9 o'clock.
And can you tell me what, if anything, occurred at that point?
No tabulation was being done at that time and it was announced that Mr. Mingo was not feeling well.
Okay. So when you got to Ashman's Building the next day, did you see Mr. Mingo?
Yes, I saw him.
In the tabulation room?
He was in the tabulation room and up in the, um, in the office on the foyer at the, at the, at the side.
I didn't get that last part.
He was up in the building inside on the second flat.
Well, you were on the ground floor.
Yeah.
How were you able to see him on, on the second?
The architecture of the building allow you to see upstairs.
I see. So you saw him in two places? You saw him in the tabulation room and upstairs?
Yes, ma'am.
And when you saw him, how did he appear to you?
Pretty well.
Apart from Mr. Mingo, did you see any other GCOM staff members there?
The deputy chief election officer, Ms. Roxanne Myers, was there. Ms. Roxanne Myers. And we also saw the chief election officer.
Where did you see the CEO and the DCEO?
The DCEO was on the, was in the tabulation room on the lower level and the CEO was upstairs in the office, on the second flat.
At about midday that day, did something happen?
Yes. We saw an ambulance arrive at the building and we were alerted to that arrival by the sirens.
Okay. At that point, did you see the deputy CEO?
Yes, we saw her.
And did she, did she say anything?
Yes, she said that Mr. Mingo was not well.
And when she said this, where was she?
She was on the second floor at the time.
And where were you?
I was on the ground floor and she was shouting down.
She was shouting down?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
And what became of Mr. Mingo?
I saw him being taken out of the building on a stretcher.
Now, after that, did any verification continue?
No verification continued.
Did you remain in Ashman's?
We remained at, I remained at Ashman Building and I was particularly concerned as to whether or not there would be a replacement for Mr. Mingo.
Can you now recall how long you waited there?
Three hours.
And did Mr. Mingo come back?
No, he did not return.
Was any replacement brought in for Mr. Mingo?
No replacement was, um, brought in for him and even though we had made suggestions that, uh, are you, um, a returning officer from another district come over?
Now, did the CEO or the deputy CEO give any explanation to the party representatives as to why there were no replacements for Mr. Mingo?
No explanation was given, ma'am.
Were you and other party representatives given any explanation as to why the, why the verification could not continue?
They said that we had to wait on Mr. Mingo and we kept, I in particularly, in particular, kept protesting as to why there was not a, a returning officer from another area that could have filled that post.
Well, did they tell you how long you were going to have to wait before verification resume?
No, ma'am.
Were you in the building around 6:00 PM on that day, Ashman's Building?
Would that be on the 5th, the next day?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And did you see, um, persons arriving at Ashman's Building?
Yes.
Tell us what you saw.
On that day, on the 5th, we saw, we were told first that there was a bomb in the building.
Okay. So can you give us some more details about that? Was this about midday?
Yes, ma'am.
And who told you there was a bomb in the building?
It was told to us by the, by Ms. Roxanne Myers and other GCOM staff.
And where did they tell you this?
In the tabulation room.
And having told you this, did they make any request of you?
We were, it was requested that we leave the building.
Did anyone leave the building?
I did not leave and so did my party representatives and so did members of other political parties. We remained in the building.
After that, sorry.
Mr. Aaron, at the, at the time that Ms. Roxanne Myers told you or announced, um, the, that there was a bomb in the building, did anyone ask her how she came by that knowledge?
No, sir.
Did any police officer say to you or in your hearing that there was a bomb in, placed in the building?
Yes, sir.
Do you know the name of that police officer?
No, I don't know his name, but the, a police officer came in and said that there was a bomb in the building. In addition to that, the fire chief also came into the building and announced that we should leave. We should evacuate the building.
The fire chief made that announcement?
Yes.
Who was the fire chief at the time? Do you know his name?
Mr. Gentle.
Mr. Gentle?
Yes, sir.
The policeman who said that you should, you and others should vacate the building, was this a constable, a, a uniformed officer or what?
It was a uniformed officer.
Not the constable?
Not a constable. You would have been, been in a...
And was he wearing a nametag?
Yes, but it was not visible to me.
Okay. So you are unaware of how anyone, police or GCOM or Ms. Myers, came by the knowledge that there was a bomb in the building?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Now, you say that you basically received three requests to leave the building, GCOM from the fire services chief and from a uniformed officer. Could you explain to me why you did not comply with that request?
The first reason I did not comply with the request because we did not see GCOM representatives leaving the building.
Okay.
They remained in the building.
So let's go back to where we were. We were talking about 6:00 PM that evening and you said you saw persons arriving at Ashman's. You are about to clarify, who were those persons?
Those were, um, members from the Guinean Police Force, in particular, the practical service unit.
How did you identify them as being part of that unit?
By the way, they were dressed.
Could you explain that a bit more for us?
They were dressed in khaki and not the regular police uniform, which is blue and black. They were dressed in all over khaki.
Okay. Were they armed?
They were arms with, armed with AK-47.
Did they come into the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, did you hear any GCOM member of staff request TSU officers to come to the building?
No, I did not.
What was going on in the building when the TSU officers entered?
There were no tabulation going on and we were just sitting, waiting for the tabulation to restart.
So when you say "we," do you mean party representatives as well as observers?
Yes, ma'am.
And when the TSU officers came into the building, can you say where they went?
They stood in various locations of the building and they started to ask us to leave the building.
And when you say they started to ask us, is it that they came individually to people and asked them or were they issuing commands?
They were issuing commands.
And what were these commands that were being issued by TSU officers?
Kindly leave the building.
Did they say why they wanted you to leave the building?
No explanation were given.
Where was the CEO at this time, do you know?
I did not see him.
Where was the deputy CEO, do you know?
No, I did not see her, see her.
Did anyone comply with these, these, um, requests to leave the building?
Not at first.
Did anyone ask the TSU personnel why they wanted you to leave the building?
I did.
So you spoke to one of the officers?
Yes.
And you asked him why he wanted you all to leave the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Did he reply?
Yes.
What did he say?
He's working by instructions.
Did he say from who, did he say whose instructions?
No, ma'am.
Did you ask him whose instructions?
Yes.
And did he answer?
He said he's just working by instructions.
Now, you said some people left. Were you one of the persons who left?
Yes, ma'am.
And after you left the building, did you attend a press conference together with other party agents?
Yes, I did.
And were you, were you aware at this time that court proceedings had been begun?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go to the next day, which is the 6th of March, 2020. Did you return to Ashman's Building?
Yes, we returned to Ashman Building.
And did you go to the verification room, tabulation room?
Yes, we went to the tabulation room.
And again, when you got to that room, who was in that room?
There were GCOM officials and there were members of my political party and members of other political parties there and observers. Mind you, ma'am, it was set up in a different location.
I see. So where was the tabulation room now?
It was now set up to the back of the building.
Okay. And... Okay. And did you see Mr. Mingo there?
Yes, I saw Mr. Mingo.
And how did he appear at that point?
Very well, he was, he was fit.
Were there other GCOM employees there?
There were GCOM employees there and they worked on the, in the tabulation.
So the tabulation began?
It began.
Tell me what was the process that was being used?
The process that was being used was the count was now being called from a spreadsheet and not the SOPs.
Who was who was in possession of the spreadsheet?
The clerk that was counting, that was presenting it to us. It was being presented on, on a spreadsheet on the screens.
Did you, had you all, when I say you all, I mean party agents, had party agents before that the verification process began on that day? Had you been given copies of that spreadsheet?
No, we weren't.
Were you shown what was on that spreadsheet before the process began?
No, ma'am.
Did you inquire why of any GCOM employee, why a spreadsheet was now being used?
We did.
Who did you ask questions of?
We asked questions of the Mr. Mingo and also of the other clerks that were presenting the information.
Did you receive a response to your inquiry from Mr. Mingo or any other member of GCOM staff?
In particularly, Mr. Mingo.
What did Mr. Mingo say?
We should use our SOPs to verify.
Yes, well, did he explain the appearance and use of the spreadsheet at this point?
No, he did not.
Did he explain what the spreadsheet contained?
No, he did not.
So when the process, um, began in this new part of Ashman's Building, using this new process of this spreadsheet, tell us what occurred, what followed?
We began to protest. I began to protest along with my party members and other political parties that they were using a spreadsheet. And then subsequently, uh, a court clerk came with a notice to stop the count, the verification.
How did you know that this was a court clerk?
He was dressed in uniform and he announced that he was from the court and he had, uh, a document to stop the count.
And did he give that document to anyone?
He was prevented from doing so.
By whom?
By police officers there and he could not get to Mr. Mingo to serve that and the count continued.
I see. So what did the court clerk do? Did he remain there? Did he leave?
He remained and he kept trying to get to Mr. Mingo to serve the notice.
Well, did party agents do or say anything when you saw police officers trying to stop Mr. Mingo from being served with a court order?
We started to protest and in particular, Mr. Anna Nandalau was there and he said to the court representative, you need to go and serve it to him.
And did the court clerk eventually get to Mr. Mingo?
Yes, ma'am.
How long did it take him to get to Mr. Mingo to hand him this document?
I would say between 20 minutes and half an hour, 20 to 30 minutes.
Did Mr. Mingo make any attempt during that period of time to reach out to the court clerk to accept the document or to invite the court clerk to come to him to re, to receive the document?
No, ma'am. He just continued to count, to verify.
Did he acknowledge the presence? I, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Aaron. About how far was the court martial from Mr. Mingo, you would say? I know distances are always a tricky thing to estimate, but any idea how far he would have been?
About 15 feet, 15 to 20 feet.
Do you know whether Mr. Mingo saw him trying to approach him?
Yes, sir, he did.
How do you know?
Because he was looking directly at, at the clerk.
Do you think he heard when the clerk said he has a document to serve?
Yes.
He was within hearing range in your view?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Aaron, you said the, this person you're calling a clerk, are you sure he was not a marshal from the court?
It's a marshal, sir.
I, I was troubled by the use of the word clerk. Yes, you're correcting yourself now.
Yes, sir.
It was a marshal.
It was a marshal.
Yes. You're saying he experienced delay in serving an order of the court, that's what you thought it was?
Yes, sir.
On Mr. Mingo? And from what you were seeing unfolding there before you, that delay was caused by police officers who were preventing him from getting to Mr. Mingo?
Yes, sir.
You were seeing that?
Yes.
Aaron, when you said you saw the police preventing him, what exactly were the police officers doing to prevent him?
Every time he go to step forward, they were holding him back.
They were holding him back. Did you ever hear Ms. the marshal inform the police that he was a marshal of the court and he had a document to serve on Mr. Mingo?
Yes, sir.
He told him that?
Yes.
And you heard that?
Yes, I heard that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we had gotten to the point where you explained that after about 20 minutes, the marshal of the court was able to serve the document on Mr. Mingo.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, did you, what did Mr. Mingo then say, having received the document?
He stopped the count, he stopped the verification. He said, he said we would have to stop.
And did he say why?
He said because there was a court order ordering him to stop.
Did he give any indication at that stage as to when the verification would resume?
He did.
What did he say?
He said that it would resume at GCOM head office in High Street, Kingston, the afternoon at 4 o'clock, 4 or 5 o'clock, I can't remember clearly.
Sure.
And he, um, and he specifically said that there would be largest, large screens there that would help us to verify the count.
Just for the sake of clarity, at the Ashman's Building, you said a spreadsheet was being used?
Yes, sir.
Was this spreadsheet being projected onto a screen or were numbers being relayed from the, whatever it was, the spreadsheet to the political party representatives?
It was being projected on a screen, a large television screen.
The spreadsheet was projected onto the screen?
Yes, sir.
But, but I'm sure that you said you didn't know what was on the spreadsheet? When now I'm gathering that you could have seen it?
Yes, we could have seen the spreadsheet.
I, I apologize, I might have missed that. So what you were seeing on the spreadsheet in terms of votes, and I assume that's what it had, votes that were counted in favor of the various political parties?
Yes, sir.
Was that information on the spreadsheet consistent with your statements of poll?
No, they were not.
Thank you.
And following from the question just posed to you by the commissioner, when you recognized that there was a difference between numbers on the spreadsheet and your statements of polls, did you so say or do anything?
Yes, we pointed that out to the chief election officer. So sorry to Mr. Mingo as they were counting. I'd say we're very, very, very fine.
So what did you say to Mr. Mingo?
We said that the tabulations, that these SOPs that we had were not corresponding with the numbers on the spreadsheet.
And what did Mr. Mingo say?
We should continue to use our spreadsheet, our SOPs, because that, the information on that, uh, spreadsheet came from their SOPs.
Did he say why the information had been put on a spreadsheet?
No, he did not.
Did you gather from Mr. Mingo's response that he was saying that you should continue to hold on to the, to the statements of poll that you had? But that the information that you're seeing projected on the screen came from their statements of poll? Did you gather from that that he had a different set of statements of poll, statements of poll that were different from yours?
He would, yes, sir.
Okay, well, if, if that was your understanding, did you query that?
We queried that with him.
That is, how could you have a statements of poll that are different from ours? That was the basis of your query?
Correct.
And can you tell me, sir, what was the, Mr. Mingo's response?
That we should continue to use our SOPs because those numbers were from the SOPs that were in the possession of GCOM, Guinean Elections Commission.
And therefore, did you conclude that the SOPs that GCOM had were different from the SOPs that were handed to your political party?
Correct.
And can you tell us whether your experience with your statements of poll vis a vis the projected information on the screen, that the other political parties had statements of poll that matched the information on your statements of poll?
Yes, sir, but did not match those on the spreadsheet.
I see.
And if I can say, one of the requests, when we would have gone to the Kingston Building, to my understanding, it was requested by the court that we do not use a spreadsheet, that it, we should use, that GCOM should not use the spreadsheet, but they should use their statement of polls.
Yes. Was, was it pointed out, well, you did say that it was drawn to Mr. Mingo's attention, that the information on your statements of poll did not correspond with what he was projecting?
Correct.
And despite drawing that to Mr. Mingo's attention, he said to you, continue to hold on to your statements of poll?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Aaron, Mr. Mingo said that the your statement of poll, continue with your statement of poll, because and we will continue to use, the information on the spreadsheet is being taken from our statement of poll. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
And the information that was on the spreadsheet was not consistent with your statement of poll?
That's correct.
But you're quite certain that he said that the information on the spreadsheet is taken from our statement of polls?
Correct.
Thank you.
And when he said our statements of polls, you understood him to mean GCOM's statements of polls?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, sir, the statements of polls received by your party, are they not what you refer to as carbon or original copies of the statements of polls from the polling stations?
Yes, ma'am.
And in fact, they are copies of the state months of, of the statement of poll which is pinned up outside each polling station, correct?
That's correct.
The statements of poll that you had carried signatures of presiding officers and political party agents at any politic, uh, particular polling station?
Yes, sir.
That's a requirement, is it?
It is a requirement.
And your statements of poll carried such signatures?
Yes, sir.
Right, so this spread, there is this dialogue about the use of a spreadsheet and reference to GCOM's statements of polls and so on. After the discussions about that, what if anything occurred?
After the discussions about that, we were told to report to the GCOM office in Kingston where the verification will continue.
And did you then go to the GCOM office at Kingston?
Yes, I did.
Is there a name for that building or what is it called?
It's a GCOM head office, Guinean Elections Commission head office.
Around what time did you get there?
About 4:30.
And at, could you describe what you saw when you got there?
When we got there, there was, um, an area that was designated for the count and there were, there was a piece of cardboard going over it and there was issues and challenges getting the projector to focus on that piece of material.
So a projector was being used to show, um, data on the cloth?
Yes, ma'am.
And by whom was the projector being used?
It was being used by the GCOM clerk under the instructions of, um, Mr. Mingo.
Okay, you're dropping your voice a little bit.
Under the instructions of Mr. Mingo.
Sure. Certainly. And we have some other material to show, so I was thinking I would do that as a testimony. So how far were you from this piece of cloth?
Less than 10 feet.
And what process was being used there? First of all, was Mr. Mingo there?
Mr. Mingo was present.
And apart from your party, were there other party, and what about observers? Did you see any observers?
Yes, there were observers there.
Okay, so very quickly.